Good evening, everybody, to the log at eight, city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Barkley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Rarden.
Here.
Ewer. Here. Benner.
Here.
Harden. Here. Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
We have the invocation tonight, Greg Hamlin, First Christian Church.
Brothers pray together. Father, we thank you and praise you for this opportunity as we come together to serve this community. We want to especially thank you for the foundation of truth, of goodness, that we all call on each and every day to raise our families in a good community. We're glad that that foundation is the foundation you've laid for us, and we want to seek you, Father, as we make these decisions today, and we ask your blessing on this meeting and on our community, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item, citizens to be heard, we have Jeff Hirsch, Linda Long, and Aaron Ryan from USD 261. Talk about the USD 261 school-based health clinic.
You can do the minutes first.
I'm sorry.
Minutes.
You're right. Presentation of approval of minutes, minutes from July 11 of 2022. Councilman, better?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the July 11, 2022 meeting.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Epstein.
Ewer.
Epstein.
Benner.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Now, I have one. Citizens to be heard, we have Linda Long, Jeff Hirsch, and Aaron Ryan.
Well, good evening, Mayor Kessler, members of the council. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Jeff Hirsch, I'm the superintendent for the Hayesville Public Schools. We're here this evening to share with you a little bit about what's happening in our district in regards to our school-based health clinic. We have two representatives tonight that will present that information, Linda Long, who oversees the program as liaison for the district, and Aaron Ryan from the University of Kansas School of Medicine. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the real experts, Linda and Aaron, and let them share with you a little bit about the program.
I think we have a slide. Is it up there somewhere?
There it is.
There it is. That's great. As Jeff said, I'm Linda Long, and resident of Hayesville and a longtime Hayesville School District employee, so we're very excited about our school-based health clinic and want to share that information with you. We're just going to give you a little bit of an overview this evening. So we first opened in October of 2021. Our focus is to help provide medical care for those who don't have another medical care resource and to primarily serve the students of USD 261. Our little statement there from KU, you can go to the next slide, I'm sure you want to read. So how it all got started was, we noticed as a part of our school district, there were a lot of barriers in our community. One of those main ones was the lack of can-care providers here in our community and a lot of families and children who had can-care coverage. So a lot of kids who couldn't seek medical care close by because of lack of that service around, lack of transportation to facilities that were able to take that, or also for families that didn't have can-care or any way to pay, not a way for them to access that medical care. So lack of appointment availability, transportation obstacles, the things you see there. Also, the school-based health clinic model was something that's been growing over the last few years because of helps with school attendance, for employees, also for students, so that was really attractive to us. So we started seeking out community supporters and found out that KU, that KU was already working on a school-based health model and had started a school-based health clinic in another district here in our area. So we picked their brain and talked with them and got some other wonderful partners, Credit Union of America, the city has been very helpful to us, various other community organizations, and of course, KU have all played a part in how we've made that happen. So on to the next slide about who we serve. Right now, we serve all students and children in USD 261. So that could be anyone zero to 21, because anyone eligible for a Hayesville School District program. So we have our parents' teachers program, all the way up to 21-year-olds who are still in our system. Any of those would be eligible to be seen in our school-based health clinic, which is located in one of our school buildings, right at the edge of the administration building, kind of in the Freeman area across from Casey's over there. We also see siblings of USD 261 students, if there is a case where a family has a USD 261 student that goes to our schools but a sibling who does not, we would see the sibling as well. And then, as of January of 2022, we added all USD 261 staff members. So for students, all the children, we do comprehensive care, so we can basically be their doctor's office and our provider. Krista Weaver, who's a nurse practitioner there through KU, can be their regular family physician, family provider. For our staff, we do acute visits only, so runny nose, colds, cut yourself at work, those kinds of things. We don't do medication management and long-term illness for staff, but all acute visits we definitely do. And we also have just recently added all family members of staff as well. So talking a little bit more about services we provide, the comprehensive care for all the students, that can be anything from immunizations, well-child visits, we do offer lab services, x-rays, EKGs, all of those things can be done right there in our clinic. We also do TB skin testing for all new hires through USD 261, so that's a really convenient resource for those that are coming in to be employed in our district. We do flu vaccines, COVID-19 vaccinations, all kinds of acute and immediate care visits for those adults that you see there, all those basic things that might be needed. On to the next one for logistics and scheduling with us. Our phone number at the clinic is listed there, 554-2317. We have part-time hours at this time, I won't go through all that. We will get you more information as you need it, but we are not a walk-in clinic, we are scheduled by appointment, so that gives information there about how to schedule and those kinds of things. We also offer for Hayesville students flat-rate sports physicals and some of those things when kids need those to play sports and that kind of stuff. Okay, on to the numbers, and I'm not going to go through every one of those little tiny numbers, but Aaron's going to talk a little bit more about our numbers since we opened and how it's gone for us.
I think that if we go ahead and just go to the next slide, the slide's a little busy.
Yeah, there's a lot there.
So the good news for us is that, you know, after an initial ramp-up period, we settled in throughout the school year at a very steady kind of 65 to 80 patients per month, averaging about three and a half, four patients a day. The good news for us, we think, is that we've actually seen 70 to 80 patients a month during the summer when school hasn't been in session also, so people have been reaching out and utilizing the services. Couple of observations we made when we started, and kudos to Linda and the district leadership and really our other community partners for helping us morph the project to meet the needs of the community. When we got started, we realized that probably 50% of the patients that were coming through our clinic also had some sort of mental health diagnosis or a need that they had. And so we were able to use some community philanthropy through the Wichita Open, we were also getting some philanthropy through Credit Union of America, as well as repurpose some dollars in the contract to get them kind of out of an echo-based teacher-training mode into more direct clinical services. And so we're excited about adding some mental health services this fall, where we're going to have some direct patient care right there at the clinic for psychology and behavioral therapy, in addition to bringing on a med-peds physician to help supplement the adult care there at the clinic. Ideally, we need, it should probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 200 visits a month, so I mean, we're looking at needing to double in order to maintain sustainability in the long run, but we're thinking through our psychology efforts as well as our adult efforts, we're encouraged and optimistic about our ability to get there.
Very much.
Linda mentioned a little bit about the challenges, particularly what the payer makes here in the community. We've seen over time, in the eight or nine months that we've been open, we're doing about 53% Medicaid, probably 48% commercial payer, we've got a small handful, maybe 5% that are uninsured, that we've been able to take on as well. And so that was certainly, we felt a real value add to the community where there was just a shortage and an inability of patients with Medicaid to be able to find services anywhere convenient, so we're happy to be doing that for you guys. As we look forward to the future, like I said, we're adding, you know, behavioral health services this fall. Certainly, you know, we're looking at some other opportunities here in Hayesville, as well as looking at some other grant opportunities to continue to expand services or fund those services in the future, so that hopefully we can have a sustainable product for the community.
Absolutely. We started at about two patients a day when we first opened, and we're up to averaging about six patients a day right now, so we have grown very quickly.
And our goal is eight, our goal is about eight patients a day. So we're getting there, we've certainly seen a positive trajectory on that.
Absolutely. The next slide talks a little bit about how we can work together, and basically, this is just some of the same things that Aaron's talking about. We want to get the word out to everyone in the Hayesville community that we are there, we're available for their children, that we want to expand, and that we can definitely help with the medical needs of their children, medical and mental health needs of their children. So we are just looking to make sure that everyone knows about us, that we get the word out. We have all kinds of marketing materials that we can put around Hayesville businesses, we would love to partner with Hayesville businesses, anything that we can do to help be a support to the community, that's our mission.
If I could add just a couple of thoughts to what Linda and Aaron presented, one on appointments, I want to be very clear, students cannot walk in on their own and seek an appointment, they have to have that set up by a parent. A parent has to agree to do that, sign off that it's, that they agree with it, provide all that information. We do not give any kind of, I want to be very clear about this, we don't give any kind of vaccination, any kind of treatment without parent approval, and the parent being with that child if they are underage, obviously. Do we have some older students that come in on their own? Absolutely, that are high school students of age, or maybe that are homeless, that this is their only medical care, and in those situations, it's different, but I want to be very clear that we don't treat any student without parents signing off on that, so be very clear.
So our providers there utilize Zoom and other telehealth, HIPAA-compliant telehealth technologies in order to connect with the parent while they're at their workplace, in a car, the ability to step out into a hall, so that we're still providing that convenience and not asking the parent to leave work and come back here to be with the patient, but we do utilize those technologies in order to have the patient, or I'm sorry, to have the parent in the room with the patient consenting to care.
Right. Mr. Hirsch did make a very important distinction, though. We are not an extension of our school nurse's office. We work very closely with our school nurses' offices, but it's a totally different function. We function as a doctor's office that a parent would initiate the appointment for. So a school nurse couldn't say, Johnny needs something for this sore throat, and then walk Johnny down to our clinic. That's not how that appointment is initiated with us. The appointment is only initiated through the parent contact. Okay, next slide. And this basically is just our information, our who's at the clinic. April Knudsen is my assistant, who helps check patients in. Krista Weaver is our nurse practitioner based at our clinic, works for KU, proud Hayesville resident and proud campus grad there. And also to invite each one of you to an open house that we're going to be having on September 12th. I believe we designed that specifically because it's before your next city council meeting, so if you could pop over before your council meeting starts, we'd love to see you there, 5:30 to 6:30. We are directly west of Casey's, so if you go down Meridian and you park in the, what looks like it's probably the Freeman Bus Drive, where you see banners that say the big SBHC, that's where we're located. We would love to welcome you there and have you take a look at how we've transformed a school classroom into a medical office and answer more of your questions we can answer tonight, we can answer then, we'd love to have you.
All right, council, any questions? Councilman Crum?
I don't really have any questions, I just know it's a great program, I'm glad to see it's growing. I was just going to suggest that that last slide they had, if we could get that on Channel Seven and let it run up until the event, maybe, and maybe put it on our website too to help draw attention to it.
That's fabulous.
I don't see any other questions, but I do appreciate you coming down and I do appreciate your presentation. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, that sounds like a very good, very interesting program. I was wondering, how is it funded?
Aaron, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so currently, we're using SRR3 money that was available to the school district. We understand that's, you know, a part-time run right there, we've only got a few years to capitalize on that funding stream, and that's why our goal is to get self-sustaining through fee-for-service insurance billing, much like you would see at any other doctor's office in town where you would go.
Mr. Hirsch, anything else about the district piece?
The district is committed for three years, and that, at the end of that three years, our SRR monies will run out, and we would not, at this point, be able to fund that based on our budget, so that at that point, we're open between KU's promotion, district's promotion, the clinic will be self-sufficient, we'll be able to maintain it. We believe it's a great asset for our students' families and the Hayesville community.
At our current growth rate, I think we feel very positive that we will be self-sustainable. That target is eight patients a day, and right now, we're already at six, and it's not even been a year yet, so if we can get the word out and have folks using it, I don't think we're too worried about that sustainability.
Who would also echo that KU has been a great partner through this process, very visionary, and would not be where we are today without the services of KU and Linda and her team's commitment to this work account, so I want to thank them for all they do every day for our students, they do a great job.
Councilman, better?
I just wondered, how does the billing for staff who might utilize this, how does that work with their existing medical insurance? Do you folks become like a network provider for them?
Absolutely. So we are in network with a significant number of insurances across the state, certainly the ones provided to staff here, so it would just be like going to an urgent care center or their other primary care office, whatever it may be, we would bill and collect from that insurance, like any other doctor's office visit.
Any other questions, council? Again, also, I just want to appreciate the community retreat you had last week, if you want to say anything about that, I thought it was a great experience.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, very pleased with our turnout. We offered last week for the first time in our district, a community retreat. We invited about 135 people, we had approximately 85 show up, which was good, and we had, Mayor showed up, we had a couple of our legislators showed up, we had several families, staff, the day was spent listening to different speakers, and then also doing breakout sessions with our staff presenting on different programs that are happening within the district. Chief Phil and his colleague presented on school safety, which is on the minds of our staff and our students right now, after all the happenings within the last three or four months in the United States. So Chief came out and assisted BJ Knudsen in presenting on school safety, did a phenomenal job and represented the city very, very well, and we appreciate the partnership we have with the police department. They are, they do a great job in supporting our staff and students, and are always a quick phone call away, and we're very appreciative of that. So felt like it was a good day, and we anticipate offering the same community retreat next year, and we'll extend an invitation to everybody on the council and anybody from the city that would like to attend. We'd love to have you, and a great opportunity to learn a bit about the great things happening in our district, as well as across the state of Kansas, so appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you again. All right, next we have Kenneth Swart from Hayesville Fall Festival.
Yeah, my name is Kenneth Swart. I'm actually a resident of Hayesville and a former city employee who retired after 32 and a half years, very proud of this city. I'm currently the Hayesville Fall Festival president this year, and I'm here before y'all to ask the request of the use of Ritz Park, as well as a portion of Sarah Lane and the empty lot that's across from the recreation center, the hack, and this is for, actually, this year is the 21st and 23rd of October. It is the third full weekend, so we go by Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that is our full weekend. So this is the odd year that we actually have it, where it's like, almost like the fourth weekend, it seems like, and a lot of people get mixed up, so, but we have some plans in this year's works, as far as trying to do like the O6O, expand Beer Garden, it's been a very big hit. We'll have all that later, we'll submit all the paperwork, as well as the licensing request as soon as our insurance comes in on that. Also, I'd like to take this time to thank the city for being a wonderful partner with us, all the way from public works to the police department, providing the security, and basically, the USD 261, use of all their parking lots and facilities that we, where we've shot fireworks from. The city has been a big supporter, and this is the actual, this started in 1984, for those that don't know this, by a few residents, that was also some former council members, and this is our 38th year, and actually, one year, of course, we know what year that was, 2020 with the COVID that hit, so that kind of put a damper on the actual full scale of the festival, but this is the 38th year since 1984, but this will be the actual 37th full Hayesville Fall Festival and all, and, but, we have some things in the plans, I'm working with the current, with the radio station, that we're trying to up our game on some entertainment for Saturday night, but we'll still have the Bingo at a park on Friday, as well as our concert, and we do have a carnival. Everyone knows that kind of, like Otto Way, kind of sold out a little bit, but we do have a contract with We Entertainment, who bought up a lot of Otto Way's equipment, and they were with Otto Way last year to actually give us a carnival, and I've had calls from other cities and was wondering how we did something like this, but we had a contract, and Danny Otto Way, you know, stepped up and his relatives who owns We ended up stepping up, so we ended up with an excellent fall festival last year. We can tell that because people were tired of being cooped up, and it's getting to where we're getting wore out, you know, there's a few, the volunteers still left, but, you know, we're going to make sure that this year's a memorable fall festival. So I just want to, you know, thank you for everything and just ask for the use of the park for that week. We'll start setting up usually about Wednesday when the tent people come in, so that's on the 19th, and that'll go till Monday when we have everything completely out of the park.
So you're looking at from 19th to the 24th?
Yeah.
Councilman Crum?
Actually, Ken, I got a question first. Do you guys look at the school calendar when you're trying to book stuff and how you're doing stuff at all, because like this year, because you're moving to Dana Week, there's actually no school on that Friday, so you could even have more activities going on, and it would probably be busier just because there's not school at all that weekend, so I don't know if you guys ever look at that or not, but I just double-check the calendar and there is no school on that Friday.
That's something that we can present at our next meeting, which is tomorrow.
Okay.
What council would like to do?
Make a motion and allow the festival to use at the weekend, that week.
So a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Crum?
I mean, sorry.
Ewer?
Better?
Yes.
Harden. More hair.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson.
Trying to see if I'm paying attention.
I have no idea, no idea what happened.
Thank you. All right, next, she's not on our agenda, but Susie Sutton for a lot of card to speak about budget. So Susie, if you'd like to state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Susie Sutton, I'm from 349 East K Avenue here in Hayesville, and I'd like to thank the council for letting me speak. The budget was presented last month, and I reviewed it a little bit, and since it was, I forgot the technical term, but it doesn't, it requires some moving funds around and stuff so that it balances, I looked at it a little bit more. While it doesn't take a tax increase or anything, this year, I'm afraid that because of the specific increases this year, they're not ones that are just going to happen this year. Most of them appear to be the payroll increases that are proposed. Those are going to happen every year, and then if you do it this year, then you have to do it again next year, and those type of things keep growing, and you can't back off of them, so I'm afraid, okay, maybe we won't have an increase this year on taxes, but then next year, or just the year after, and we have other things proposed in the near future, such as the pool, and there's other things I know that are in the works, so I've got a concern about this very large payroll increase across the board. One, and I do want to make it known that I am, all four people should have a living wage, and I do understand the concern with the police department, and so most of my comments do not include them, because I know what the police department is paid, and they are paid on the low side, and they do need taken care of, but I believe the, across the board, looking at department by department, the proposed wages, I think, are, I believe, are too high, and I think it should be reviewed and perhaps lowered, and perhaps look at lower increases this year, and then spread out over the years, as the budget allows, or instead of CPIs, make them merit increases, instead of just handing out money to people just because they're occupying shares. Yes, you want to maintain employees, but you don't want to maintain just every employee you have. And, yeah, the thing is, you know, in the private sector, private businesses are not giving people 8% increases. Private and businesses, 3% to 5% is an average, and those are merit increases. There's very few private businesses that are giving out COLAs anymore, that's a thing of the past, people have to earn their raises. And, you know, went online and talking to Will, I know it's not just based on CPIs, part of it was based on a wage study in 2017 or 2018, and I went back and looked in 2017 and 2018, the Hayesville employee average, the average wage was ranked between, like depending on which year, 7th and 15th wages in the state of, I just forgot the word, government agencies in the state, and so it's like, well, if we're ranking there, I'm not quite sure why we felt like we need to make huge increases. So, you know, that's just my, it is just my opinion, but I kind of feel like we maybe need to step back and look at those proposed wage increases, and maybe perhaps make smaller ones and/or then shift any of the increases as to merit increases, if we're going to propose increases, you know, put it in a merit increase budget, except for, as I said, you know, the police department, because I do see that that is an area that they are, we are starting our police department lower than other areas. Then the other item I did have to bring up is, we, there was brought up the retirement plan change from CAPERS to the KPNF, and I had a couple of things with that was just my concern about if we'd be able to maintain contributing over 20% year after year to our employees' fund, their funds, because that's a high amount to keep giving to employees year after year. because that's a high amount to keep giving to employees year after year. It's like, yeah, okay, we can do it this year, but can we, can the budget sustain that every year? Especially if we raise the police salaries, if we give the police a twenty percent raise, can we also add on to that a twenty percent benefit of adding to their retirement fund? And then when I did some research, I found out their contrib, employees have to increase their contribution if we switch to KPNF. Right now, they have a mandatory contribution of six percent. Their, their contribution will increase as well. And it looks like it's seven, seven point one five. That's only one point one five percent. But there's a lot of families that are, you know, week to week. And, you know, can they afford that one percent? You know, I know my husband worked for the school this year, you know, twenty-five years ago. And when he found that he had to give that mandatory six percent, that did a big swing on our budget. We're like, oh, we didn't know we were going to have to give that six percent up. You know, so to a lot of people, a few percent's a big deal. So, and, and then this comment, I'm just sharing because I couldn't find enough information to understand where it came from. But in reading, and I have it with me, it was a comparison of Capers and KPNF. The document said that KPNF might not be enough for a sound retirement, that individuals would have to save on their own as well. And I'm not trying to use that as a judgment. I'm just trying to share that I read that and I would want to make sure this council made the best decision for the police department because, you know, I know you want to make the best decision for them. So, and I've got that document with me. I would share that with you, but.
Good. Appreciate you, you talking and.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Barkley?
Ma'am?
Yes.
I understand your concerns. And I have, I've thought of all of those same concerns.
Okay.
But some things that you might think of is we have really high quality employees and you gotta, we have to pay them good or they'll leave. We've been pretty conservative. I, I look back and pretty conservative as far as pay goes. And so if you don't pay them right, they're going to leave. They'll go somewhere that will pay them. Right. And it was a pretty reasonable increase to catch up with others. And as far as the cops go, another thing to take into, into concerns that they do have to contribute more and we have to contribute more. But the lifespan of a cop is not as the same as everyone else.
I get that.
I know the average, a fireman dies eight years after retiring. His lifespan is going to be shorter than everyone else's lifespan. And so we might be paying out more. And it's a harsh thing to say, but we're not going to be paying out more for as long. So better retirement for a short amount of time. Something to think about.
Yeah. And like I said, I get that with the paying more to the police officers.
Yeah.
But, and my only concern is like, okay, this year we could afford to pay twenty percent more. But if we also said, okay, this year, next year, next year, we're going to pay them their salary more than, and pay that retirement more, then are we now going to be paying a total to a police officer of eighty thousand dollars instead of we were paying them, unfortunately, paying them under forty? Which, no, forty is not acceptable. But.
Yeah, it's a tough one. I have the same concerns and I have the same concern with taxes, but.
Yeah. But, and that was my concern also, is we give people these raises across the board, then now they're just going to have to, in two years, going to pay out taxes more because we had to raise our taxes.
That's something to take in consideration. Thanks for sharing.
Yes, the employees are the biggest asset of the city.
Right.
And, yep, we need to keep employees here instead of them looking elsewhere. I know a lot of other cities are competing against, like Target, are paying more than like some police officers. So we definitely have to keep, be competitive and keep our, keep our great employees. City of Hayesville. Councilman Rorden?
I would just like to interject. As a retired police officer, I wished I had KPNF instead of Capers. Because I gained absolutely nothing through Capers. Very, very minimal. If I'd have been through KPNF, I would have had a lot more on retirement than I did through Capers. That's just my two cents.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't know between the two. I'm just saying that, you know, I'd read that one comment and that alarmed me just because, to me, it makes more sense to twenty percent going in versus six percent. But when I read that comment, that just alarmed me. And that's why I was just sharing it because I don't know what the basis of it was. And I do know there were problems with Capers because my father-in-law retired with Capers. And.
All right, thanks again. And, oh, I guess just one last comment. All the surveys we did, there were about five surveys that we gathered up and they were all current. I mean, they weren't, they weren't old ones, like seventeen, eighteen.
Okay.
So, all right, thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, next we have item two, approval of license and bonds. We have none. Item three, introductions of ordinances and resolutions. A, we have a resolution waiving the gap requirement of KSA seventy-five dash eleven twenty-eight A for the city of Hayesville, Kansas. This is the annual gap requirement waiving that we normally do. Councilman Crum?
Can I make a motion? We approve the resolution for waiving the gap requirements of KSA seventy-five dash eleven twenty A for the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Barkley?
I just have a quick question. I'm not an accountant. What's the, why do we want to waive that?
Will, if you'd like to explain this.
I gotta remember the right acronym. We're under the K-MAG instead of the gap accounting.
Yeah.
So basically, we don't have to track every asset that we have into much simpler form of accounting in most cities in the, there are some larger cities like Wichita that still go under gap. Most of the cities around besides Wichita wave out a gap, under gaps that don't have to do all those extra accounting.
Is there any advantage to gap whenever we're looking at getting federal funds or anything?
It's not been anything that's come up on anything we've applied for before.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Next, we have item B, an ordinance annexing and incorporating certain land within the boundaries of the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
So they came to us, are they gonna, are they planning on developing that? Do we know or just ask?
They are. It's a, it is going to zoning later on this month, I believe the twenty-fifth.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance for annexing and incorporating certain lands within the boundaries of the city of Hayesville, Kansas as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Barkley?
So do we know what we're looking into making there?
It'll be a housing development. Towards the, towards the origin, there'll be duplexes.
Is it going to be duplexes?
Well, we're part of it. Part of it will be duplexes.
So I've been contacted just in the last two days by a lot of people in the neighborhood. Like, I just saw this like a day and a half ago. And immediately after I saw it, I've been contacted by a ton of people that do not want it. They don't want it because it's going to drop the, the, their house. They don't want it for multiple reasons. But, so I haven't, I've not had one person say, yeah, let's do it. I've had a lot of people come like, we don't want that here. We don't want duplexes, duplexes, little houses here. And so if I'm going to represent my little ward there, I'm going to vote no on that. I'm against it.
So the, it'll be around forty-nine duplexes in the front and then around ninety-some single-family homes towards the west of that.
Yeah, multiple people have kind of been very not happy. So I'm going to vote no on that.
And the, the zoning or the, it'll go, it'll be a public hearing on August twenty-fifth. That's where, that's when they would want to, so.
Okay.
I also have a question or comment on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I've had a couple citizens also very concerned about that. I would not be opposed necessarily to the annexing, but for the main purpose of building apartment complexes, citizenism have been right now opposed. I've had more people send emails on that than really since I've been on the council, which is kind of concerning for that reason. I'll probably not vote for annexing this property.
Okay. Did you say apartments, some of you said?
Yes, they said specifically they're concerned about having apartments in that area.
Hey, they're, what they're, what's on the plat is duplexes. Duplexes and single-family homes.
How many duplexes did you say, ma'am?
Preliminary one I saw was forty-nine duplexes and ninety-six single-family homes.
I did give the citizens the information on August twenty-fifth to voice their opinions. So I would think that they'll probably be there. I know that's the next step. But I see right now that even though I generally for annexing, allowing annexation to grow our city, I think that's important for this particular purpose. It looks like the people in the ward are opposed to that. So I would have to oppose it myself.
Okay. So, so this is for just annexation? Whatever gets put on that?
I understand that. I understand that.
Councilman Benner?
I have a question. On the attached request for services and consent to annex agreement, the, let's see if I can find it here. The request is for the city for water service? Is that, is that water and sewer and sanitary sewer? Sewer, is that all understood to be that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilperson Rorden?
I was just curious how much more of this area has never been annexed? Because you got this red area, but then you've got a piece of land over here that's blank. And is any of the rest of it not annexed?
Are you talking about the little rectangle that's up on, against Meridian? Where the church is or to the west?
Well, no, to the east of the red spot. There's a section there that's not got anything built on it.
That's where the First Christian Church is? That smaller rectangle, like if you consider it a cutout of the larger rectangle? That's the church there on Meridian?
I believe it's probably just to the, it's just south of the church and to the west of the church. Kind of an L shape.
Well, I understand that. But in that L shaped, on the northeast corner, there's a section there that's not developed.
That's the church property. They've just got a very small part that the building of their church, their church building and parking lot is on. But they own the rest of that open space there.
Okay. I was just curious. So then that will annex everything in that area, finish annexing everything in that area. Okay.
Any further discussion? We already have a motion on it. Okay. No further discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
No.
Walters?
No.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
No.
Benner?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item four, notices and communications. Government body announcements. Councilman Crum?
Coming up through the library tomorrow and then again next Wednesday or Tuesday, excuse me, we'll be having matinees at the library at three o'clock. Tomorrow will be the movie Sea Level at three PM. And on the sixteenth, it will be again at three and it's going to be a turtle's tail. And then the Wednesday after that, school will have started. So the one on the sixteenth will be the last one. Reminder that also County Commissioner Lopez will have a citizens advisory group meeting here on the ninth at six PM at the library. The citywide garage sale is August thirteenth and fourteenth. Remember, you can pick up your permit at the library. And I believe there's a couple other places you can pick that up in Texas. Ace Hardware as well, but. And still selling books at the gazebo on the thirteenth and again on the twentieth and again on the twenty-seventh. And the twenty-seventh will be the last one of the summer for that. Lego Clubs meeting on the seventeenth. There will be women and minority business certification on August nineteenth from ten to one. And that's actually an event that the city's putting on. And there's a Red Cross blood drive on the twenty-sixth. That's what's going on at the library. And other stuff here. Reminder that school will be starting not this Wednesday, but the next Wednesday. So just want to kind of remind people, you're going to see a lot more kids out. Traffic's going to pick up in the morning. And one thing I want to point out, I don't know, Chief's going to talk about this later, but hearing this twice is not a bad thing. The, the crosswalks in town, the elementary schools are changing times. They're going to start a little bit later than they have and they're going to go a little bit later. So in the past, you maybe have gone by Nelson or Rex at seven fifty in the morning and the lights are going and you have to slow down. It's not going to be that way this year, but at eight, ten or whatever, eight fifteen, they would shut off. And those people would be going through at regular speed. Well, because of the change now, which elementary schools are going to be from eight thirty-five to four o'clock will be the regular time. The crosswalks will be going from at Nelson and Rex from eight to eight forty-five in the mornings now. And from three forty-five to four fifteen at the end of the day. So they'll be coming on a little bit later than they have been, but they'll be going, they'll be on longer, not longer, but later than they have in the past. Just want to make sure everybody's aware of that in case you need to adjust times of when you're leaving or things like that. The other times in the middle of the day are eleven twenty to eleven forty-five and twelve thirty to twelve fifty-five. And then Rex does have an additional time because HMS is down there and those are going to come on from two forty to three ten. Then you've got that break until three forty-five when they come back on. Just ask everybody, please pay attention. Put your phone down. You do not need to text. It's not that important. And keep your eye out for the kids because the kids are going to be excited and going right off the bat. And we just have to be careful and make sure that they're all safe out there. But also remind everybody that when a school bus has their stoplight out and the flashing lights going, no matter what direction you're going, you've got to stop. So please just keep that in mind. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any other council member have announcements before I read off the senior, senior center? All right, so for the senior center, there is a trip to Boudreaux Burgers and the Kansas Star Casino trip. It is August ninth at eleven forty to eleven, to three thirty PM. That's free. It's a free ride from the Hayesville Hustle. Donuts and coffee and conversation, August tenth and August twenty-fourth. That is at eight thirty AM. That's also free. Bunco, August eleventh and August twenty-fifth at one PM. It's free. Monthly birthday dinner, August twelfth at six PM. It's six dollars a person. Sign up by August tenth. Bingo, August eighteenth at one PM. Two dollars for four cards. Online security, safety and computer class is August twenty-third at two PM. It's free. Ice cream social, August twenty-fourth at one PM. It's free, but they require a sign up. Monthly breakfast, August twenty-seventh at ten AM. Six dollars a person. Sign up by August twenty-fifth. And some of the recurring weekly events for this month, Domino's Mondays at one PM, Mexican train Tuesdays at one PM, Billards Mondays and Fridays, two PM, and Wednesdays at ten AM. Steps Tuesdays and Thursdays at ten AM. Cards Tuesdays and Thursdays at eleven AM. Drumming class Friday at ten thirty AM. They're staying pretty busy. Hayesville Hustle, July of this year, total rides two hundred and thirty-nine compared to a hundred and sixty-five last year. And new registered riders, we have six for the month of July compared to eight of last year. All right. I also want to give some updates on some projects going around. So the assisted living facility, just to give you an update, the design agreement with PEC was approved on June thirteenth. And PEC is working with the assisted living facility group during the design process for the infrastructure. And P E C is working with the assisted living facility group during the design process for the infrastructure. The Copper Tail Edition, the design agreement with P E C was approved on June thirteenth. And the project is also still in design phase with P E C. Withland Village, the annexation that was considered just a few minutes ago. The zoning again will be on August twenty-fifth for the public hearing. They're looking at the, like I mentioned, duplexes and single-family residents. North Main sidewalk to sixty-third over to Mabel Street. The design agreement with P E C was approved on June fifteenth. The project is in the design phase and there will be an agreement with the, with the railroad upcoming. The South Main sidewalk to Timber Creek Estates, P E C has provided that preliminary construction estimate for that. The South Oriented sidewalk on the east side, they have a preliminary construction estimate from P E C. And we'll request a design agreement with P E C as required, as required for county projects. The Broadway sidewalk, we are applying for the K doc cost share funding for this project. And the, the funding ground opened up today. So we'll be applying again for that. All right, next we have item B, Sedgwick County Fire Department Station Thirty-four, monthly report. Same here, packet memo for new businesses. It'll be email from cost communication. All right, item five, old business, we have none. Item six, other business. A, consideration of bids for repainting the carport.
As you can see in the e, memo, I don't think I can talk today. The carport, if you hadn't noticed, is in need of paint. After the tornado, many, many years ago, there was a mural painted on it and it is chipping away. So we do need to get that repainted. We did reach out to three different, we actually reached out to four different painters. The fourth one just declined to even look at it. So we did get the three to come out and look, only to submit a bid. So we are requesting approval of Myers painting for the amount of seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars.
Councilperson Burton?
Is that repainting the mural? Or is it just painting over it?
It's cleaning it off, putting some sort of sealant on the concrete blocks and then just a solid color.
Dang, I can't imagine that's as big as my house. Might be cost that much.
Councilman Crum?
Well, the underside too and the poles, so it's both sides.
Have we reached out to the school district or anybody to see if they might have somebody in the art department, the art department that will be willing to come out and look at that mural to see if they could redo that mural and maybe just get it sealed? And then only have to have the front part of that painted instead of the whole thing?
We did not recently, I believe, Georgie said, in the past they have reached out to them.
Yeah, it's been several years. Joanna Branch was the one that originally painted that with a group of kids from Summer Elements in two thousand. So. We have not reached out recently, no.
So we're not on a time limit on the, or are we on a time limit on the quotes?
I'm sure if it's too far out, the paint cost could change, but now we're not.
Can we maybe check on that before we accept one of these bids and see if maybe we can? Because if they would agree to do that and get that done, we wouldn't have to pay as much to have the front of it done.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion for that or just?
Yes, either table it or deny it.
I make a motion, we table the repainting of the carport until our next meeting.
Second.
So a motion and a second to table the repainting of the carport bids? Any discussion? Question, please.
Question, please.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Charlie, I wasn't able to catch, why are we tabling it? What was the purpose for tabling it?
I thought we might reach out to the school district to see if we had anybody that would be willing to save the mural on the back and maybe redo the mural and instead of just having it a regular color.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, item B, consideration of purchase of police patrol vehicle. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, we have a request to purchase a vehicle. We're replacing one vehicle in our fleet as we have in years past. As we've talked about in a few meetings before this one, there are some supply chain issues. Public Works has been having trouble getting home vehicles. We're having the same kind of issues trying to locate vehicles to purchase. Ford just opened up their, their orders on August second, so they opened those up last week. We've been attempting to get bids for vehicles. For a twenty twenty-three, the, the first bid that we got was forty-three thousand five hundred, which is considerably more than we had planned on paying for a vehicle when we budgeted this last year. We did find that Superior Emergency Vehicles, which is also consequently our vendor that takes care of our wiring and our emergency equipment in the vehicles. They had a twenty twenty-two on order and they're willing to sell that one to us when it comes in for thirty-six thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars, which is a little more than we paid before, but not near what they're asking for a twenty twenty-three right now. So we are requesting to buy one twenty twenty-two Ford Explorer Police Package from Superior Emergency Vehicle that costs a thirty-six thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars. That is a budgeted item that would come from the law enforcement fund. Entertaining any questions or motion?
Councilperson Burton?
What did we budget?
Uh, we budget approximately forty-six thousand for the vehicle and the equipment to go in it is where our budget sits. The equipment to go in it normally runs us around nine thousand, somewhere in there, eight, nine thousand is what it's cost in the past. This year, the quotation that I've received is about ninety-four hundred, so we're right in there.
Okay.
With that, that bid.
What would like the, what council like to do? Councilperson Burton?
I make a motion, we accept a bid from Superior Emergency Vehicles for thirty-six five sixty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have C, consideration of wastewater manhole rehab.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, we have received quotes to rehab thirty-one sanitary sewer manholes. The rehab consists of lining the inside of the manhole with a mortar resin. This helps limit water infiltration into our treatment plant. Included a map in your packet outlining the areas that will get this project. We're looking at rehabbing approximately two hundred and twenty-one vertical feet. I'm requesting authorization to accept the best bid from C B E T Consulting in an amount not to exceed the budget amount of thirty thousand dollars. Does it stand for any questions you may have?
Councilman Crum?
Are you asking for the not to exceed thirty thousand in case they come up with some kind of problem? We got a little bit of a cushion there.
Yeah, not much of a cushion, but there's a little bit of cushion there.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid from C B E T Consulting with wastewater manhole rehabilitation and not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid from C B E T Consulting. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have consideration of wastewater aeration basin repair.
We've also received a quote to repair several areas of the basin at the wastewater treatment plant. There are vertical cracks that need repaired. The repair will include removal of falling, failing material, regrouding and painting of the two corners of the basin. Wildcat Construction was the only company able to make these repairs without engineered plans. I'm requesting authorization to contract with Wildcat Construction to perform these repairs for ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Councilman Crum?
Tony, where are these funds going to come from to pay for these?
They will come out of equipment maintenance. It's not a budgeted item, no.
I'll make a motion that we approve the wastewater aeration basin repair for Wildcat Construction for ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid as presented. Councilman Bender?
What, uh, what exactly does it mean that Wildcat was the only company that was able to make them without engineered plans?
So when this problem arise, we met with P E C several times and talked to them on the technical repair aspects of this. They actually gave us a price to draw up design engineered plans for a contractor to repair these basically instructions. Towards the end, they also suggested that Wildcat Construction is probably more than capable. We had them outside, on site to inspect the basin and the cracks in it. And they said they were more than comfortable with moving forward with the repairs without engineered plans.
Is there any further discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have consideration of purchase of Parks Department mower.
We've also received proposals to purchase a twenty twenty-two Walker commercial mower for the Parks Department. This mower will be utilized in irrigated turf areas. Existing mower will be transferred to Plague and Carpenter. Requesting authorization to accept the best bid from Southern's El Dorado for a total of twenty-one thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. And this is a budgeted item.
Councilman Bender?
I make a motion, we approve the bid for twenty-one thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents from Southern's for the mower.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item seven, Department of Reports, Administrative Services, Will?
Georgie's got an announcement.
Good evening, just want to remind everyone, the hometown market only has three more Saturdays. Last Saturday will be Saturday, August twenty-seventh, hours are eight to noon over in the historic district. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next we have City Clerk, Angie.
City offices will be closed on September fifth for Labor Day. If there are any water emergencies, please call five two nine, five nine one two. And then I just want to let you guys know that our community building and park shelter rentals are no longer being taken at City Hall. They are being taken at the Activity Center. So if you'd like to rent or reserve those, contact Rob's staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we have Police, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to, uh, reiterate what Mr. Crum said earlier about the school zone times changing. There is a memo in there with my department report that basically states what the times are changing to. Again, it was a request due to the time that school changed, that we had to change the times of the, um, the lights out there that are flashing. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that and that they will be on at different times. So if you're set on your routine, make sure that you're paying attention to that. We've got to make sure that everybody's paying attention and giving full time attention when those kids are out there going to school. It's definitely a safety issue for everybody, especially with the, the sun coming up at that time of day. You really want to watch and make sure that you're paying attention to those lights, not looking at the cell phone, not looking at something else, not arguing with the kid on your way to school. Don't do that stuff. Just make sure that you're paying attention to the lights because they will be on at different times. Same goes with after school, with school going until four o'clock. It'll be a little bit different having those lights on all the way until four fifteen. So it will be a little later. People that have never had to deal with the school zone lights because they've always been on earlier may get to see those coming on. Our visiting officer this evening is Sergeant Randy Novak. He's our K nine officer. He's our first shift supervisor currently, so say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, just wanted to mention real quick, since the school district was here earlier, I mentioned the retreat last week. We did talk about some safety and security things with everybody at that retreat. We just talked about working with the schools and making sure that everything's ready for the kids and staff to return in the most safe and secure environment that we can, that we can have. We prepare for, with them. We've worked on some different plans and reviewing some things and making some suggestions, making sure that we're prepared for all hazards, whether it be weather, suspicious persons or, or people coming in to, to do bad things. We made sure that we're watching all that stuff. Make sure everybody has a safe and secure learning environment. We do have our three S R Os that are assigned to the schools. They'll return to school when school starts again. So they'll have their assignments. And also all the other officers are being made aware of any kind of safety protocols that we have in the schools. And we have some newer officers, so they're also being made aware of those. And we're doing some training with them to make sure that they're well-versed in the way that things go. We just want to make sure that all their safety and security plans that we do review at some point, that they all follow best practices and safety protocols that are out there. Just to make sure that everybody stays as safe as possible. Because our, we want to make sure our kids and our school staff and all of our citizens stay safe. That's what we're here for. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you for keeping our kids safe. Councilman Crum? Your question?
Chief, actually, and just so people know, you guys, the, the district has a crisis meeting once a month and the, the city's always involved with that. And you, your officers always take part in those too, in case anything new comes up, correct?
That's correct. They have several different, and they could speak better to it, but they have the building crisis teams and then they all meet. I believe we meet, what was it, monthly or quarterly as a district and then they bring in outside agencies also. So that includes, the Police Department includes us, that includes the Sheriff's Department, Sedgwick County Emergency Management, Sedgwick County Fire. They're all invited to these meetings and oftentimes they do come out there so that way everybody's on the same page. Also involves school administration from different buildings, principals from different buildings, also superintendent's staff. And we come in and we'll talk about issues that are going on or any concerns that anybody has. So that way everybody's on the same page and we know what everybody's concerns are. That way we can make sure that those things are addressed and those things are planned for in the event that something should come up. That's, that's the time that we want to do it, is in those meetings, we want to talk about things that could happen, not when they happen.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody knew that that is something that we keep up on and the district and the Police Department does work fantastic.
Absolutely. Normally our S R Os are there and then there's one of our administrators there, either one of the lieutenants, the captain or myself is usually there at those meetings.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Public Works, Tony?
Just got a couple of updates here. The Mill and Overlay projects are slated to begin on August seventeenth. As a reminder, the streets included in that project are Sterns, German, Wayne, Nor Jane, Nelson and Fager. The contractor is required to put door hangers on those residents in those areas forty-eight hours in advance. And we will also be posting that on social media as it gets closer. Of course, weather can always play a factor in schedule. The water meter project is going very well. So far today, we haven't had any calls or concerns from residents. So far, there's been just under three hundred meters installed. So some of the magical things that we talked about when we approved it was we're getting high flow alarms from some residents instantly. Every four hours, we're getting those notifications, so we're making due diligence to go notify homeowners and check out leaks and stuff. Also, the gazebo at Riggs Park is continuing to further deteriorate. So due to safety concerns, we're going to be removing it. Park Board will be discussing it at their next meeting if there's a desire to construct a new one or just leave that space open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Recreation, Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Hazwell Activity Center will be showing their next movie night at the pool on August twelfth. We're showing Free Willy. On August thirteenth, we'll have our next pickleball tournament at the, at the hack. The pool will close for the season on August fourteenth. The youth soccer deadline is on August nineteenth. We have a fishing clinic in Riggs Park that is free on August twentieth at nine A M. Dog Days will be at the pool on August twenty-first at one P M. And then we'll have our When Pigs Fly Run Walk on September ninth and tenth in Donner Park.
All right, thank you. Next, item eight, appointments, there are none. Item nine, off agenda citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens who'd like to be heard? There are none. Item ten, executive session, non-scheduled today. Item eleven, review of expenditures, a summary of July expenditures. Councilperson Ewer?
We're all sitting here looking at you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file the, July, July, thank you. July expenditures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the July expenditures. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, we have a consent agenda. We have one item. So we'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilperson Burton?
Make a motion, we approve the consent. Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next, we have item thirteen, council items, A, council concerns. Councilman Crum?
I was wondering that the crosswalk that we have over, uh, by the pool, just right by the cow skin, uh, if maybe we would consider painting a section of that red to make sure we don't have anybody parked too close to that cross. Kind of like the same thing we did over by the bridge, uh, crossing over by the stadium. The other day, there was an activity going on over there and there was actually a school bus, but I've seen cars over there that are parked right on it and you basically have to come up to it and stop to look to make sure there's not somebody coming. I thought maybe if we could paint that red possibly, just like we did the bridge, uh, by the stadium, it might alleviate that. I would like to thank Officer Novak. I saw that bus and went over and just happened to be over here and saw him and asked him and he went over and, uh, tried to make sure that got taken care of, but it's just something I thought we might consider looking at to make sure that that's a safe area for kids, for, well, not even kids, just anybody to choose in the path over there.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Roden?
Yeah, I had a, I know previously you had mentioned about the South Broadway sidewalk, uh, working on that. But I have spent probably the better part of two weeks going back over the South Broadway corridor, the original. And after more I thought about it and I, and I've making contact with state and county officials, I got to looking at this and I'm thinking like, this actually needs to be updated. Uh, this was put together in October of twenty-eleven. Uh, came to council in, uh, probably about that same timeframe of twenty-twelve. Everybody was all on board with it. I don't really, I mean, I was on council then, but I forgot. But it just kind of went by the bite, the waste, and so, uh, looking at it, like the sidewalks, the streets, about everything that's addressed in this study. Uh, if we were to do that now, the cost would be a whole lot more. I mean, one sidewalk, uh, that I particularly paid attention to was about thirty-seven thousand dollars and that was from seventy-first to seventy-ninth. But with the cost of concrete and everything else, I'm sure that, uh, it's going to be a whole lot more than that. And I understand we're, we're working with K dot and with the state and all that, and I appreciate that. But, uh, I think, uh, my personal opinion, I think we need to revisit this. I think we need to update it, uh, because twelve, uh, ten, eleven years is a long, there's a lot of stuff that's happened. There's a lot of stuff that's changed in eleven years. And so I think, uh, my personal opinion, I think we need to update this, uh, re-study it, do whatever we gotta do and let's bring this up to date. So.
Okay. Yeah, we definitely look at that. Um, so you're talking about doing a, a new study?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they, like I said, it was October of twenty-eleven, uh, when it was first done. And that's eleven years ago. There's a lot changed in eleven years. So. That's all I.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Barkley?
Uh, so the last update about the possibility of a crosswalk on Moridian. They had a school though, said that, uh, well, I think it was on June twenty-ninth. But they were going to see, they were going to perform a pedestrian count after Labor Day.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, and then we would need to look at what the price of a sidewalk would be from the crosswalk to wherever. And so since this takes so long and school's already about to be in session, so I wonder if we can get ahead of that and look at the price of a sidewalk ahead of time. That way, what, what, once I get that pedestrian count done, we already, we already have that price.
We're, uh, we're actually doing that right now.
Awesome.
Looking at the price for the sidewalk and then the crosswalks can't be put in unless there's a sidewalk there. So we're, we're trying to move that project along to, uh, for the sidewalk.
Okay, good deal.
Councilman Benner?
I have a question, going back to what Ball was talking about, the South Broadway corridor plan from twenty-eleven, was it?
Yeah.
Well, that's when it first started and then it was brought to council in twenty-twelve. Okay. Was that Hayesville that did that study or was that Metropolitan Planning Commission or some, or both?
It was, uh, partially WAMPO funded, so, yeah, we didn't pay the full amount for that. That was one that we got funding through WAMPO.
But, but we, um, initiated the study itself.
So whenever it was initiated, it was before I started dealing with any of it, but I believe that we probably put it in as a project when they had certain monies available for studies. That's how a lot of stuff with WAMPO is. So then WAMPO provided funding through the federal money that they have and we had several entities that participated in that, including county and, yeah, WAMPO, K dot, city, planning commission.
I was just wondering if that, that whole study was ours to redo or to revisit? Or if that would have to include all the parties that it did back then?
We could, again, see WAMPO funding if they had funding available for studies to try and get some funding sourced for it. That's not a hundred percent city. But we could do a study on Broadway whenever they wanted and we could take that into, into consideration if we do need one.
Any other concerns, council? If not, item B, council action requests and updates.
Alright, so Seventy Fifty Plaza, uh, property's still not in compliance and court date was continued till August twenty-third. Uh, seventy-one oh six, South Broadway, there's a trial date set for September twenty-seventh. And then eleven twenty-six, East Grand, uh, the white truck has been removed. The resident has begun removing the dead tree. Uh, they have until September nineteenth to remove the dead tree per city code. And twelve oh six, East Grand, uh, notice of violation has been communicated to the resident and they have until August twenty-fifth to address the clearance of the trees per city code. And finally, thirteen oh six, East Grand, uh, the bus has been, been removed, but upon investigation, further violations were discovered in the backyard. Uh, the resident has been communicating to us and working on the property and as long as they continue, we will work with them. Uh, if no objection, I will close out the original report since the bus has been taken care of. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, item fourteen, adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.